Okay, if we could please, we'll call our meeting back to order. Thank you for your indulgence and patience while we work through some of those matters. I'll recognize Mr. Hickson for recognition, please. Mr. Larkins, I would like to start by bringing up Jerry Lawson and Ashley Wolf from Rogersville Middle School, and then followed by Sam Barton from Churchill Middle School.
First of all, I say thank you board for recognizing our state track members and giving us this opportunity tonight. Not only you all, but I want to say thank you to the community for their support and helping us provide and fund our state track team as we went to Clarksville to compete in the state track meet. And we started, I really didn't know what I was getting into, went to the sectional meet, and we kept placing, ended up taking nineteen athletes to Clarksville. One of my compadres was sitting there, he said, "Well, you're just gonna have to get a greyhound." And I was like, "Yeah." So, we do have some of our athletes here tonight, some of them we had at Rogersville Middle House scrimmage, and so we're missing some, but I want to recognize those athletes and what they accomplished. And I do want to say, you know, thanks to the parents for the support that they gave us, bring your kids, practice, get them to meets and so forth. Ashley Wolf, my assistant coach, my wife, family, and putting up with me. First of all, I want to start off with our seventh grade girls. Our first one is Rachel Young. Rachel? Rachel competed in the girls' four-by-two relay, and also in the girls' four-by-four relay. She placed thirteenth place in the state in the four-by-two, sixteenth in the four-by-four. Our next one is Lily Henley. Lily competed in the four-hundred meter run, which she placed seventh place. She also competed in the four-by-four relay, which finished in sixteenth place. Our next seventh grader, young man that's here, is Logan Coburn. Logan competed in the four-by-one-hundred relay and the four-by-two-hundred relay. He finished eighth place in the four-by-one and twelfth place in the four-by-two. I'm gonna recognize the gentleman who's not here, Nick Matroni. He placed, he ran in the four-by-one and the four-by-two relay. Another gentleman that's playing football tonight, Elijah Sexton. He was also the four-by-one and then the four-by-two relay. Another gentleman that's at the football is Elijah Tipton. He competed in the four-by-two-hundred relay, and then H.L. Charles in the four-by-four-hundred relay. We also co-opted with Bull's Gap. I had two athletes from Bull's Gap that were on the team, they're also in the scrimmage. We had Kobe Barton, who competed in the four-by-two-hundred relay, and Bryce Elliott, who competed in the four-by-four-hundred relay. Now for our eighth graders. Our first one is Carly Itzen. Carly competed in the girls' four-by-two-hundred relay, which finished thirteenth place. Our next eighth grader is Atlee Ettrickin. Atlee competed in the four-by-two-hundred relay that finished thirteenth, and also in the four-by-four-hundred relay, which finished sixteenth place. Our last girl, eighth grader, Gracie Smalls Lawson. Gracie competed in the four-by-four-hundred relay, which she finished in sixteenth place. There was approximately thirty-nine different teams at this track meet. Our boys, one, he's not here tonight, is Noah Parven. He competed in the four-by-one-hundred relay, which finished in eighth place, and then the four-by-two-hundred relay, which finished in twelfth place. He's here tonight, eighth grade boy, Brian Pearson. Brian competed in the four-by-four-hundred boys relay, which finished in fifteenth place. Our next one is Justin Mendoza. This is the one we pulled out of the hat. Justin never competed till our conference and sectionals, and he finished third in the state in the shot put, finished second in the state in the discus. My last one to recognize, this gentleman did an accomplishment most people don't even attain as a team, but as an individual, he competed in three individual events at the state meet and placed in all three. Preston did the long, Preston McNally, who come up? Preston competed in the long jump, which he finished sixth place. He competed in the one-hundred dash, which he finished seventh place, and he finished, he ran in the two-hundred dash, and I'm biased, but I swear the video shows him winning. He came down to the video, and he finished second in the two-hundred. He qualified in three individual events and placed in all three individual events. It was a banner year for our RMS track team, especially the boys. They finished first in their conference meet, the first team in Hawkins County history to ever win the sectional team trophy, and then they finished fourth in the state as a team. Friends? Track is a little different than most sports. I call it a hybrid sport, because you compete as an individual in your running event, but you still get points for your team. So you're doing both, and you know, to, so every time you do well, you get points and you still win the, you still win the team trophy. So, for what they've done this year is a major accomplishment, and the kids did it. I'm proud of each and every one of them.
Representing Churchill Middle School this evening is Coach Autumn. Sam was not be able, was not able to be here, but she is here to recognize the students from Churchill Middle School.
Sorry, Sam had a scrimmage game, so I'm here. I'm Autumn Spencer, and I am also track coach at Churchill Middle School. We had several students compete at the state level. Unfortunately, we only have a few of them here, but I will read through all of them, and then if I read their name and your year, you can come up. So first, we have our four-by-two-hundred relay for the girls. This relay consisted of Lily Christian, Sarah Weiniger, Jaden Quebeca, and J.C. Cassidy. They were our conference champions, so they placed first in the conference, they placed second in the region, and then they were state qualifiers, they went to state. Next was our four-by-four-hundred relay, which consisted of Taylor Castle, Sidney Hamilton, Jaden Quebeca, and Sarah Weiniger. They were also conference champions, and second in the region and a state qualifier. Next, we have Sarah Weiniger, who's not here tonight. She placed second in the region and qualified for the one-hundred meter hurdles for the second straight year and placed tenth in the state. Next is Marley Snap, who is also not here tonight. This was her first year competing in tracks, and she was able to place first in the region and fifth in the state in discus. Taylor Castle is next. She placed, it's her third straight year qualifying for state. She's going to high school next year, she'll be here. She placed eighth in the long jump at state and placed eleventh in the four-hundred meter dash at state. And the one boy we were able to take to state, John Ross, is at the scrimmage, so he's not here. He placed second in the four-hundred meter dash in regionals, and he was a state qualifier in the four-hundred meter dash.
Second item on the recognition list is Mr. Kevin Milton, recognizing the 2019 Skills USA national participants.
Thank you board for having us today. We're also going to recognize the HOSA. I was given the privilege to take the HOSA team to the Orlando World Leadership Competition history, and wasn't able to go. So, it was an honor to take two young ladies down. Their names were Anna Haley and Kaylee Scanlon. Now, Ms. Haley's here, Ms. Scanlon couldn't make it, but we want Ms. Haley to come. And their competition was the original medical innovation. And again, I won't call this, but this was the world competition. So, this included students from around the world, and in their competition, there was two-hundred-and-fifty competitors. Wow, yes. Guess what? They got seventh. We had a great time, we got to experience Disney World, and also, Ms. Haley was able to attend some training while she was down there. She was able to attend what was called Stop the Bleed. So, she was able to compete, she was able to learn a lot of medical training, so this was a great opportunity for these young girls. And again, we want to thank you for allowing us to attend. And this contest was due the eighteenth toward the twenty-second, and of course, we rented a van, we drove that twelve hours, and that was interesting, I suppose I've never done that. And, but they were a pleasure to have, and we want to thank the parents for allowing them to go with us. And we got back Sunday the twenty-second, and I had a challenge. I got up, I actually got home the twenty-third, I'm sorry, drove back Sunday the twenty-third. I got up Monday the twenty-fourth and headed out for Skills USA. So, I took nineteen wonderful young students to Louisville, Kentucky, and we volunteered was able to compete in seven different events, five from the criminal justice program, one from the culinary arts, and one from the cosmetology. So when I call your contest, please come up. We'll start with the criminal justice Skills USA program. The first contest was prepared speech. That's Ms. Leah Hosteller. Now, she's not able to make it here tonight, but Leah had forty different competitors in her contest, one student from each state, and I got reported to the newspaper, this is the best of the best. Only state competitors are allowed to compete here. So she competed against forty other states, and she got eighth place. So we want to give Ms. Hosteller a lot of credit. Again, she did prepared speech, she had to do a speech five to seven minutes, and her topic was Career Ready Starts Here with Skills USA, and she did a wonderful job. Our next competitor was extemporaneous speaking. This was Ms. Emily Christian, and again, she also had forty competitors, extemporaneous speaking, that were given a topic. She had five minutes to prepare, and she had to do a speech for three to five minutes. And again, she had forty competitors, and Ms. Christian got fifth place. Our next contest for the criminal justice was Career Pathway Showcase. This was a contest, we entered it for the first time. We did a project called the Distracted Driving Awareness, and this project consisted of Elijah Wahid, Jonah Prox, and Garrett Armstrong. So gentlemen, come on up. Again, they were state champions, and they were state gold medals that they won at Chattanooga. Gentlemen, if you turn around, look at Autumn, smile. They also had, this was a team of three, and there were eighteen different teams that entered this contest, so that's about fifty-four students. And again, we didn't know what to expect when we got there, and we did some change while we was there, because we noticed that we needed to step it up, right guys? And it was wonderful, because they're the one that needed to see the change. And so I, so I appreciate them taking the initiative, going to Walmart at the last minute and buying some things, and they did a wonderful presentation, and guess what? They got fifth. Thank you gentlemen. Our next contest, they weren't able to make it here, but this is the Chapter Business Polimentary Procedure. Zach Mayo, Mary Morrison, Alexis Fance, Sarah Gaunt, Anna Johnson, and Elliot McLean. They got third place. There were twenty-some teams, and of course, six on each team, and I'm so proud of these young people. This is our third year placing a medal at the nationals. So again, last year we got second, this year we got third, and so I'm so proud of these young people. Let's give them a medal. Our last one for the criminal justice is our action skills. Mr. Aiden Mullins, he's here. He was a freshman, he's now sophomore, but I want to keep him out, he was a freshman competing. He won state gold medal, went to nationals, and I believe there was about twenty-eight competitors, and this was a two or three day event, and he got to the final round, where they narrowed it down, I believe, was the top nine? Top nine? So he got to go to the final round, and did a great job residing how to, or to lift off a footprint from a crime scene, and Mr. Mullins got second at nationals. We also want to mention our other programs that here volunteer are culinary arts, the advisor of Mr. Michael Gordon, the entrepreneurship team, consists of Alexis Moore, Ariana Rodriguez, Hannah Russell, Hank Marshall. I don't think any of them's here today, but they did a wonderful job. They created a business plan, and they got eleventh at nationals. At last, our cosmetology program, advisor Ms. Tammy Turner. She had a contestant in Nell Care, and she had, her name was Delaina Simmons, and her model was Haley Reynolds. They did a wonderful job and got twenty-sixth, so let's give them a medal. And thank you to the board, and we appreciate all your support, and this was a great experience for the contestants. And I also want to give a special thank you to Ms. Karen Hosteller from Churchill Elementary. She volunteered to go with us to help us drive and transport the students and help these supervisors. We took nineteen students, and I just couldn't have done it without her. So we want to make sure that she knows that we thank her, and thank you again to the board for allowing us to go.
Mr. Chris Andes from the Volunteer High School Band, please come forward.
Director Hickson and board, thank you. We're very honored to be here tonight. I want to go ahead and pass this around so you all can take a look at this. As you're looking at it, the Volunteer High School Band has, has had a very good five or six years recently. We have been invited to march and perform in Chicago at the Thanksgiving Day Parade. We were the only band from Tennessee that participated in that. In 2016, we marched in the Macy's Christmas Parade in Orlando, along with participating in the Russell Athletic Bowl. And most recently, we're the only band to participate in the New York St. Patrick's Day Parade, which we were the only band from Tennessee. The word that you're looking at tonight is a culmination of hard work from many former students, current students, band boosters, staff, and I thank all of them for this hard work. This is the Tennessee Bandmaster Sweepstakes Award. This is given to a high school or middle school band who has earned superior ratings in marching band contests, concert band festival, as well as superior ratings in sight reading. This year, at the Tennessee Music Education Conference in Nashville, we were awarded this award, and we were one of only thirty-four bands in the state of Tennessee that was given this prestigious honor. And again, we thank you for the opportunity to come and kind of share in our good news, and we hope to be giving word in the future. Thank you.
Let's get a picture with your award. Thank you again, coaches and teachers. We are very proud of your efforts and your efforts and the efforts of the students that you work with each and every day. Congratulations to great finishes, and we look forward to much success in the future as well. Last couple of items, Mr. Larkins and board, our two personnel introductions. I would like to introduce Dr. Thomas Floyd as the new middle and high school supervisor. He's here, so I would like to officially welcome him. As well as new board member Judy Trent. We are a complete team once again, as we wish Holly the best in her cosmetology teaching career at Cherokee, and saw her in the new teacher training, and she was all smiles thus far, so we'll give her a week and see if she's still smiling. She will be, she will be. So congratulations to Ms. Trent and to Dr. Floyd. That's it for recognition. Let me echo Mr. Hickson's comments, is that we're really proud of our students, we're proud of our staff, and especially those that go the extra mile and spend the time, but we really appreciate it. This is the highlight of our board meetings, is hearing from our students and what they're doing and success as we're seeing, so thank you for sharing that with us. At this time, we'll go on to our delegations. I'll recognize the Hawkins County Education Association. Seeing none represented, I'll recognize the education committee, the Hawkins County Commission. I see two members.
We have none.
Okay, all right, thank you. And welcome to, thank you for coming today. That moves us on to reports. Do you have anything, Mr. Hickson, you want to share with us? I see nothing under that heading, so we'll move right into our consent agenda. There are nine items on consent agenda tonight. We can hold any of those you wish to have discussion on, or we can vote on those to accept. Motion's made to accept consent agenda items one through nine by Ms. Charles and submitted by Ms. Trent. Any discussion? Can I make a comment in the discussion piece? Yes. Not to belabor the meeting, but I am very proud of the special ed team and their plan under the IDEA discretionary grant. You'll see there roughly sixty-six thousand dollars that they are leveraging against some training for their special ed staff, teachers, and a program that is aimed at literacy for students with disability. So we're excited to that, and it has very specific goals as to what those improvements need to be by the end of this year and the end of the grant, so we're hopeful that that will pay off well for us, and we're excited to see those results. You were making reference to item two on our agenda. That's duly noted. Please call the roll.
motions accepted, consent agenda number, items from one through nine, motion made by Kathy Charles, seconded by Judy Trent. Charles?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Larkin?
Yes.
Shaden?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. Item B on your agenda is approval of purchases over five thousand dollars. There are three items, we can do those as a single item, or we can do those cooperatively together.
Mr. Chairman, I propose to approve purchases over five thousand dollars, one, two, and three.
Motion's made to approve purchases over five thousand dollars, items one, two, and three. Do you have a care second?
Second.
Ms. Craig said second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
The purple purchases over five thousand dollars, number one through three, motion made by Chris Christian, seconded by Kathy Craig. Trent?
Yes.
Shaden?
Yes.
Larkin?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Under that finished business, I will refer to Mr. Brandon Williams' property in front of Rogersville Middle School. Mr. Williams, welcome.
This is just a quick one sheet on this property. We talked about it before, it's actually been about a year ago. The property's been on the market for a year, very little interest in it so far on the show, and we had agreed to revisit this, talk about the price, and it did move. So you have before you there recognition from our realtor, Mr. Perkins. He recommends reducing the price by approximately ten percent to one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars. According to him, that is more in line with recent sales in the area as far as the price per area. Just wanted to bring that to you, and let you act on fair and we like you.
Any questions to Mr. Williams before he has the seats?
What is the acreage on there, Brandon?
I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
I hear no questions, so the matter's on the table, but anybody like to make a motion to reduce the price to recommended amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand dollars, five, one-hundred-and-fifty-seven, five, one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars? Mr. Christian makes that motion? Second in that? Discussion?
I always like to maybe bring this back within six months if it has been moved.
Sure. Is that part of your motion? Call the roll, please.
Motion made by Chris Christian, seconded by Mitch and Hicks to reduce the price of the Rogersville Middle School property to one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-five-hundred. Charles?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Larkin?
Yes.
Shaden?
Yes.
Trent?
Thank you, motion passes. Thank you, motion passes. Break us to new business, and I refer to Mr. Hickson on discussion of school system cost analysis that was discussed most recently.
Thank you. We discussed on the twenty-ninth, which was Monday, special board meeting, my recommendation to bring in a third party to account for district cost analysis, or provide a district cost analysis, looking at operational costs. That would include salaries, and then on the instructional side and the staffing side, a per pupil expenditure for all district properties, all school sets. So if the Board would like to, would like me to proceed on that, we will get started on that right away. It is something that I would hope to get back with the approved vendor prior to that January meeting. I believe it was Mr. Christian that made that motion on the twenty-ninth, stating that we would look at a report and entertain a recommendation at that point to identify cost-saving measures throughout the school system. And then act on those by March, I think is the time.
Let me ask this question. Would the cost analysis include a building analysis of our facilities to blend together with the operational piece of it?
Yes. We would look at a, we would look at a facility's cost, a cost on personnel, and potentially, depending on the vendor, we chose, we choose, identify ways to identify savings in that report.
I'm guessing that it's very preliminary to talk about cost for such a study?
Yes, I would hope to start putting out some feelers and getting bids if it's the will of the Board tonight, and then hopefully by September's board meeting, potentially have an update on what we're looking at as far as costs are concerned.
So a motion tonight would be for you to further proceed with exploring a third party for a district cost analysis of the overall operation. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Well, since that's considered a professional service, would we have to get bids for that? Attorney services, architectural services, is considered professional services, do we need to go through that process?
I think it depends on the dollar amount. I wouldn't hope that it would be more than the required amount under contracted services that we would have to require a board approval, but I would give an update nonetheless in September, if that's okay. We may not have to take official board action to contract that out, but I would like to give you guys an update on the cost of that project, please.
What entities are out there that would provide new services?
Well, I would like to reach out to consultants in the, that have done this type of work in other school systems first. I'd probably reach out with a certain group and ask if they've contracted, passed agencies that have provided this type of reporting for school systems, especially those that are our size, start with that, and then start with that list and proceed forward.
I think some preliminary discussions, we had talked about the Nice Walkers Foundation, that they have professional educational staff there, seeing what opportunities that they would provide to us perhaps at no charge, was one of the things we'd like to pursue. And of course, Powell's business model also has some expertise in these areas, which we may have to blend another group to do the facility studies, but they can certainly do the operational piece. So there was a lot of things that Mr. Hickson had passed on to me as we were discussing on how to approach this, but I think if this is just a jumping off point for us to get started.
Yes.
I hear a motion that we authorize Mr. Hickson to proceed.
Certainly.
Mr. Christian first, and I think this, what's your name? The other? Miss Shannon. Miss Shannon. Took me a minute. Do you want to repeat the motion, please?
Motion made by Chris Christian, seconded by Debbie Shannon, to allow Mr. Hickson to proceed with the school system cost analysis.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion or questions about the motion? Then call the roll, please.
Trent?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Larkin?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. The last item is the new item that Mr. Hickson referred to, is our special education students being able to attend the Tennessee Titans preseason game Sunday, August twenty-fifth, from one twenty-nine AM through Monday, August twenty-six, 2019, at three PM.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion that we approve. Special education, ten students to Tennessee Titans preseason football game Sunday, August twenty-fifth, twenty-nine AM through Monday, August twenty-six, twenty-nine AM at three PM. I heard Trent, I'm a wrong here.
Mr. Christian made the motion, and Mr. Trent second, and Mr. Hickson third. Is there any further questions? That's a great thing, I'm glad to do that, we're all excited for this.
Ms. Thacker was even volunteering her time to get down there and back without staying tonight, but that's not the safest thing to do, so we are adding it as new business and credit for it this evening, but it is a great opportunity.
Could I ask Ms. Thacker, and do the board, if we could go to or anything like this?
Sure, there's room on the bus.
We're the band.
Have sandwiches on the bus.
All right, yeah, call the roll. Well, let me just do this, all those in favor.
I want to take the opportunity, I've had the opportunity to watch Miss Thacker work with these students, and it's an exceptional job that she and her staff.
Let's give her a big hand. And we all agree with that. Thank you, Mr. Christian, for recognizing her and the rest of the staff too, at Macy's Day. We've got some very dedicated folks, we're thanking for that. So with that, we still need to vote, all those in favor of Mr. Christian's motion, let me know, sing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, force the motion carries. Thank you. Is any other business?
I have no question. Yes, the Midway Brothers were reviewed, and this goes back to the situation we had with Kepler. I think there's a misquote in there as far as funding for Kepler's school being a hundred percent from county, but because there is portions of Kepler that are funded through the E P. And you got, yeah, the A D M is part of, they're not separated from the rest of the system. So I would like to request if we find, I would just like to know if it's just me personally, what that cost is. What does it, what is the cost that we're incurring from the system itself?
I can get that for you.
Because that's important, because, and I understand that sometimes things get, this was true, but I don't want you both to think that, that, you know, a hundred percent of the fundings for our schools in separate situations are coming out of what we get from the county, from the county government, because there are other entities involved in financing all of our schools. Some of them are different, some are placed on grants, and, you know, I'd like to know what that cost actually is, that we actually have to put out from our system to fund and keep that school open.
No problem. I think the confusion may have existed, because we are absorbing a large, very large portion of the salary breakdowns, but as you notably mentioned, we have federal funds, we have, you know, that range is from Title One, Title Two, Title Three funds being used there, we have school nutrition dollars being used there, so it is not a true hundred percent of local funds being used, but I can get that breakdown.
Because, you know, the thing that it is, is when people see that hundred percent, and that's the reason I'm saying this, is because I've had calls from people that are not even in that district, or even close to that district, just berating me to the fact, you need funds, well, because we're spending a hundred percent to keep that school open, and that's not, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to take one of that, okay? Because it seems like you can't, you can't.
I'll get that for you, if it's a rule of the Board, I'll send it out there. Could you, could you get Mr. Campbell to do a correction on that statement, please?
I have a question. Shannon?
Motion's made to adjourn, all those in favor, stand up.
Stand up and say anything.